We're going to wait over there.
Just open it, John.
So I haven't yet, wrong time yet. Here, I thought I was twenty-five minutes early.
You sound like me.
Yeah, at six o'clock I might get, I thought I was twenty-five minutes early. How's everybody tonight? It is, today is January the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It's supposed to start at five-thirty. And for special city council meeting, if everybody bow, yeah, we'll start for prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this night. Thank you for all your many blessings you've come for us and given us. Help us to work together as a group to move the city forward and make the right decisions for everything that we do. To honor and glorify your name, in Jesus's name I pray. Stand up, ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for approval of the meeting's end.
I will make a motion that we approve the meeting adjourned.
I'll second that.
Ms. Mills? Backus? Ms. Ray? Ms. Shiger? Aye, motion carried, thank you. The meeting's approved. Public comments? If you'll please limit it to five minutes to the council. We have Greg Blair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I presented some streets to council about two months ago. Because sitting into this infrastructure program. I requested something back in writing, which I never received. So I'm presenting this to council once again because from what I understand, we're here tonight to discuss how the infrastructure money is being spent in the city of Darlington, right? Okay. Numerous streets on this list have been in very bad disrepair for a large number of years. So being that we're discussing this tonight, I would like for us to put this on the agenda in for the discussion tonight. But I also would like something back through email on the discussions of tonight. I think it's only fair that we get something back and write in our email stating that the council has considered some of these streets. Okay? If anyone tonight would like a copy of these streets, I have extra copies over here and I can give anybody who needs one. Anybody needs one?
I need one.
Okay. Hold one second. Okay, who else needs one?
Did you get one to the council?
I gave, I gave something to council that was supposed to be passed out, but I'll give more out. Anyone else who likes a copy? She got one? Okay. As I said, these streets have been in disrepair for a large number of years. And then this infrastructure money is coming in, and there's floor to fix these streets. So I think council needs to include these streets in the infrastructure program. Anyone else need one?
Yes, two. One here.
Okay.
And the gentleman.
Okay. I'll give him one too.
Thank you, sir.
Does council have a list of these?
Yeah.
You need one? Okay. Do you have one, sir?
I have looked at it and gave it the most pain because if you've got an extra one.
I sure do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. I would like for y'all to consider this tonight going to discussion.
Thank you, Greg Blair.
All right. Thank you.
Just for informational purposes, are any of these streets, city streets, over which we have any control?
I will look at our master list. There are some that I believe are, but some of these are state streets as well. And when I replied him, I'll give him the list.
Good evening, council, mad council. My concern is this. I've been familiar with what's going on in council these twenty-seven and more years. And ever since I've been on council, before then, we were talking about Jessamine Street and Chestnut Street. At that time, no other street was being mentioned. I don't see Jessamine Street on here. I know they did something with the back truck on Chestnut Street, which didn't happen quick. But Jessamine Street is in bad shape. It should be added to the list, and it's not.
It's on this list?
Because I know a lady, she's dead and gone now. She got upset with me because we couldn't do nothing about Jessamine Street, and that wasn't even in my area, but I tried. And in the meantime, what it was doing, water was settling up on her house. She didn't have the money to pay somebody for bond, um, popping to come in. She got jacklairs, what you call it, to come in and fix the house, but the city didn't want her to do that. And so they eventually had to tear her house down. Put Jessamine Street on there, please, and get it fixed, because that's the one that's been on the forefront for a long time. Some of these other streets that I see that you have down here, they're just becoming on the list. And that was on the list all the time. Another thing too, in my concern, the park. The driveway park over there on Southern Park. When you go out there, you can't see the playground equipment. It's so small, looks like a little ants. You can't even see it. But when, both of them were considered at the same time. I know what happened, but I'm not today tonight. I tell you if you call me, and I tell you what happened with it. The park on Hampton Street, Jake, everybody knows his name. And I can see it was done at different times, but it was not done at different times. It was done the same time, and they put the little bitty stuff over there. I think you should at least consider one piece of equipment. I know you got a stage down there. You should at least consider another big piece of equipment down there. So long. And the one over on Hampton Street that's nice. Real big. Real big, you can see it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can I make just one comment? I'd like to add something. And Alex will have information on this later, and you have information that Alex gave. We are going to, at some point, ask you to approve some equipment that will allow us. The list that you have is for contractors, things that we can't do ourselves. The piece of equipment that'll run a little over forty thousand dollars, we'll be able to do that work on Jessamine Street in that area ourselves. So I just wanted to mention that, so nothing was intentionally left off. These are projects that we have to have contractors do because we don't have to pay the bills.
Jane Lathan.
Good evening, mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen. The city of Darlington, along with the world, is going through a devastating pandemic with over forty million Americans losing their jobs, including many residents in Darlington. Through the CARES IT relief bill, Congress has approved one point eight trillion in relief for suffering Americans. In addition, numerous corporations and banks were providing debt and payment relief for our citizens. Yet, in those dire times, the mayor and all but two of our city council members voted to raise our water bill. This has imposed a serious hardship on the people you serve, and it's unacceptable. Let's review the numbers. Poverty is an issue for your Darlington constituents, especially the African-American community. The poverty rate for the city of Darlington is twenty-one point eight-nine percent. Darlington citizens consist of approximately three thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine African-Americans whose poverty rate is thirty-two point oh-two percent. Darlington citizens consist of approximately two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two whites whose poverty rate is seven point six-four percent. Over four times lower the rate in the African-American community. That makes up the majority of the population. Darlington citizens represents a large elderly community. The old age dependency ratio is forty-two point six, and the age dependency ratio is seventy-seven point eight. It is very apparent, this pandemic has affected the city of Darlington disproportionately. This further supports why right raising fees on our citizens' water bill in the midst of a global and deadly public health emergency that affected the poor, elderly, and sick was not wise, was not prudent, and was not fair. And we all know this. In fact, it was reported in a recent city council meeting that our citizens paid a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents in late fees and penalties alone on their water bill. Why? Why? Because they have not been able to afford to pay the substantial increase in their water bill each month. Moving on to why we're here tonight. In reference to the American Rescue IT fund allocation, the city has been allocated two million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents, with the first installation of one million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Given the city of Darlington, four at sea, HUD's definition of a low to moderate income city, and given the mayor and the majority of this council, of this city council members, voted to increase the usage rate, which significantly increased the water bills for all Darlington's residents in the middle of a pandemic. And given the American Rescue Plan IT fund is designed to address financial hardships and burdens imposed by the pandemic. And given this water bill increase has imposed an additional financial hardship and burden on many of our LMI families, I recommend the mayor and city council vote to allocate a significant amount of these funds to the water and sewer department and to lower our water usage rate and lower our water bills back to the pre-pandemic level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, new business, American Rescue Plan, especially the recommendation. Congress, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Lathan stated, her numbers are accurate. We are going to receive over two years, approximately three million dollars divided. We've got the first allocation. The only money that's been spent out of that is for the premium pay. Then around August or September, we'll get the second installed. I want to let you know that, and you've got this in your packet, there are basically six buckets that money can go into. And unfortunately, reducing water rates for people is not one of the allowable areas by the Department of the Treasury.
That's not true.
We can support public health response. We're not a medical facility, so we're not recommending that. We can replace public sector revenue loss. We can make investments to improve access to clean drinking water, invest in wastewater and stormwater based on infrastructure. Address negative economic impacts such as harm to workers, families, small businesses, impacted industries in the public sector. As I mentioned, the premium pay and broadband. You have in your packet the information that our professional engineers put together on what they believe are the most pressing matters. Three million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but when you look at these projects, they're not a drop in the bucket. We are recommending several infrastructure projects, which you have listed here. And tonight, I'm not asking to go through each one of these and to vote on these. I'm asking you to look at these as conceptually and to give your approval that you are interested in investing this money in water and sewer projects, stormwater projects, and parks, which is also part of this space. I do want to mention, the final ruling for the ARP, there was a final interim, but now there's a final ruling, has come out and said that the category enlisted as replacing public sector revenue loss. In the interim ruling, it was very narrowly defined, and you had to calculate it, and it was very specific. In the final ruling, you're now allowed up to ten million dollars, which is well over what we have, to take these funds and put them into general government services. That, in my opinion, would give you more latitude to do a lot of the things that you may want to do that you're not allowed to do if you just put it in these buckets. Now, we all have to follow these rules. You can't, you can't pay debt, you can't pay bonds back, we can't pay any judgments. If a grant, a federal grant prohibits you from taking a match of federal money to match a federal grant, that's prohibited. So there are certain things you can't do. But what I'm asking tonight is, and we can talk about these, but I'm not asking you to vote on these. We'll go through them and our staff's here to give you any additional information. But for example, the water and sewer projects. The first one is a gravity sewer for elimination of.
Elaine. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
And I'd truly like for you to also address the client. But I'm not standing up, I just want to, because I can't hear a lot of the stuff that you're saying, because it's all going one way. Originally, when we voted for the water bill, I mean, the increase, what was it for? Why were we increasing it? What were we trying to do?
We asked to increase the water bill because the water bill had been increased for years.
I understand, but what were we trying to accomplish? I mean, there was a reason, not just because of.
Keeping it solvent?
There was, I thought there was another reason, it was another problem that the city had. The reason that I'm asking, the reason for this, is that listening at all of the things that we can do with this plan and listening at what Ms. Lathan has already outlined, some of this, for whatever the reason that we were trying to, whatever we were trying to do for the city by raising that, not just to raise our rate. There was a reason that we were in trouble with something that we were trying to correct. That can't we try to address that and using this money, and that would give us a relief to our people?
When Oliver came back, this past year, he said that we were finally out in the. We're back where we're supposed to be. And so the water department was constantly losing money. You've got all these issues that need to be fixed, we have no money to fix them. And so, for years, they had been raised, for years. And so then all of a sudden, we had to go up.
Right.
So I want to also address that in our last meeting, Ms. Backus and I both brought this up again and said that we thought we should have put that on the next agenda to revisit, especially the usage part of it, if we'd not, Ms. Backus.
We did.
So.
And the fees, and the fees that they're being doubled and tripled charged.
Yes, ma'am. And I separate the two just because of the way that I look at things, but we did ask if we could put that on our next agenda to look at that again and maybe figure out how to revise that and get rid of that usage charge. Because the usage charge is where the money's coming from. It's not so much the flat fees. I mean, that is a difference, I understand that. But it's those usage charges, and I think we need to revisit that, and Ms. Backus and I both mentioned that the last time.
Okay, let me try to answer, and this happens before I got here, but I'm going to give you a little preview. Our auditor will be here at the February meeting, and they will go over the audit. But I can tell you that for the fiscal year, or excuse me, yes, fiscal years ending twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, your water, sewer, and stormwater lost one point one million dollars. That's why you had to go up forty percent all at once, because it had not been raised in decades. Nobody likes to pay you every credit. Nobody likes to pay increased rates, and I certainly don't.
Control the meeting tonight, okay? We're not going to be here on that February. Please, the next audience, okay? You're welcome to call us anytime afterwards, my number's two oh six four three, and I don't mean more than discuss anything with you. Kind of keep the council at where we keep putting our pressure.
Isn't this a public, a public meeting? That's the purpose of a public conference meeting.
Public comments, sorry. But it lost, Ms. Backus.
My mind is negative with you, that's how it was.
It lost one point. Ms. Elaine, those three categories lost one point one million dollars over two years, which meant that the money had to come out of the general fund. When you did that increase, it was only for three quarters of this past fiscal year. I've seen the audit, you'll have it soon enough, you'll have it in the next meeting. Your loss went from over two years, one point one million dollars, to thirty thousand dollars. I suspect with a full year, you'll have a fund balance. We need a fund balance because every time we get a call that we have to go anywhere in the city, it takes money to open drains and to tear up roads.
We were saying we'll put it on the agenda to discuss.
And we'll deal with that, and Mr. Shiger and I are talking about those things, so we'll be glad to talk about that. But I thought it was important, people need to understand how much money the city lost.
I was supposed to answer the question, there was a reason that we asked you for.
And the reason, and as I was saying.
We said that we'll put it on the next meeting.
But the reason was just so that our citizens here that has got that concern can see what we are doing it.
Yes, ma'am.
Why it was, and that some of this monies can be used if we go for the reason that we had to raise it. Because stormwater is something that we can, that the the rescue of ARP can be used for. That's all.
Thank you.
So we can find a way, just trying to get a solution.
What we're asking tonight is, we don't, we're not asking you to vote on each one of these. We'll bring these to you one at a time as they come up. What we're looking for you conceptually is to approve infrastructure, premium pay, and there's a small amount for parks because that was asked.
We've already approved premium pay.
Yes.
But what was the total, was that totaled to the government?
Over two years, it'll be about five hundred thousand dollars. So what's left is you're going to have about two point four million dollars over two years. So one point two million dollars to work on these projects.
Okay, now, as I had asked before, if Mary Jane's working with us, and she's supposed to get money next year, she's supposed to get twenty-five hundred dollars next year, and she leaves this year, that twenty-five hundred dollars is out of this five hundred thousand dollars. Even though there's five hundred thousand dollars allocated at this moment for premium pay, that number will more than likely go down, and toward the end, we'll have extra money to go back.
It will not go up.
And premium pay, so that everybody understands that is, was that, was money that was created to help pay the workers for their time during COVID.
So are we, at the point, we're going to discuss this list, or some concerns about this list? Because I have several concerns about this list.
Yeah, I would like to comment, first of all, you got a list, and everybody. We're not trying to prioritize it, but yeah, give us your concerns. We asked the citizens, Mr. Blair gave us, you know, a list of streets, and it gave us, Blair, some of these streets are state-owned streets that we can't really do anything with, some of our city-owned streets, and things like that that we can address.
There's no way of reaching out to the state to ask them to look at this?
Give me a call right after, or hang right after, or I'll give you the number to talk to, and I'll be glad to give you contacts.
At the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, it was requested that we have drill down numbers, basically. And behind this summary sheet, there's a drill down cost summary estimate between construction, contingencies, and an overhead based on advantage and needing of land. It breaks down everything.
Okay, the camera system, I'll start with that. The tractor, I guess, is Alex here?
Yeah, Alex.
Alex, if you can answer a few questions on this for council, but I think we've already discussed this a number of times, whether we can physically vote on it or not, I don't want to bring it up to vote on it in February. But the camera system is something that, the tractor, if I'm understanding this correctly, I purchased a camera system before I was mayor. The camera system, you're saying, won't really go through all the pipes like it needs to be, so it needs to be upgraded with a different type tractor that will pull it through the water. And so therefore, a lot of these streets were really, to me, correct me if I'm wrong, all of the streets in Darlington can actually be explored. And we're talking Jasmine Street, Chestnut Street, all those that need to be worked on. But all the streets, we don't really know what, when the pipes foot like this, will actually tell us whether or not we can go and fix one section, or whether the whole thing needs to be done, help us, Mr. Grant.
That's right, yeah, we know, we know we have instructions, we're not sure what the instructions are, whether it's roots, collapses, or whatever. Like I said, when the camera was purchased back in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, I haven't looked at the date and see, that was something that Mr. Kinsall and council worked on. Mr. Kinsall specked it out, when it was specked out, it was specked out with a tractor or a crawler, whatever you want to call it, that was actually designed for smaller dambler pipe. It's not designed for larger dambler pipe, which is what most of our storm drain is, and we have some sewer lines are the same way. So therefore, the tractor, I mean, the camera system that we have is almost useless. I've put it in pipes several times, and it just, it doesn't really do anything. It'll flip over because it doesn't have any weight to it. So if we're going to utilize a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, we're going to need to invest in a crawler or tractor so that we can put it in the pipe to see what we have going on, so we can figure out whether it's roots, collapses, it's collapses, we can fix them. A lot of them we can probably fix ourselves, but we've just got to be able to identify. but we've just got to be able to identify problems, that's gonna be the best way to identify.
Okay, I, I got two, it was before this, but I, we have addressed this so many times, I thought that was already settled, we thought...
We never voted to buy.
Okay, so I just don't see the point in wasting our time on that. We gotta, I mean, it's the...
We got to decide, I mean, council needs to decide, do we gonna spend the money to buy it, or no, we're not.
Right, so, I mean...
You've had the camera for what, three years now?
Right, so, I mean, either we...
Had the camera for three plus years.
Just move on, but, but here's what I'm, in fairness to our citizens who are here, do they have this list? That's the reason for this.
No, no. No, we don't know what...
So, so they don't know that this is what is being proposed, so they can have comments on it. That's why I was trying to get you all to understand, this is what this, we need to do this so that it, it won't appear that we are trying to, if that's not what we're trying to do, is to have it spent in certain places. If their input is valued, then they need to see what we are proposing.
Ms. Black, can you make everybody up?
Jeez.
Can you make everybody up?
Yeah, that's, I'm totally fine with that, but we never did that in the past with the previous mayor. We never had comment throughout the council meeting with the previous mayor, I'm, I'm so confused.
Because the reason that it has...
I'm fine with it.
Okay, the reason that this is for, for, for you, Brian, it has been established, we have so much that the, that the, uh, city manager has to put bullets on here as to what it is. So people are disrupted, they do not, I'm listening to what is being said. So this is in an effort to show that we are transparent, as our new city manager has said, this is what he's all about. So we're opening up, giving the information, so that our citizen can have more of an input than just their vote. That's fine.
Ms. Elaine?
Uh, yes, sir.
Tomorrow, um, I'll make sure that it's put up on our website.
Okay.
Does anybody get a copy of that?
This is Brian, it's the News and Press, in a position where it could run in the paper, the list of projects that are being discussed for anybody that chooses to read the newspaper. And it's just that to the News and Press and so...
By that means, are we trying to hide it? All right, but, uh, for the, 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 uh, tractor, do we need to bet on that night, or can we just bet on it?
If you would like to, we could go ahead and take care of that now.
You just said it wasn't on the agenda, so...
Yeah, it's not an agenda item, so I don't want to vote on it tonight, yeah. That being said, I, um...
Would you say we'll bring it up, put it on the agenda in February?
Yeah.
The dedication conversation need to be put on to January, February. Instead of us going through this again, and then go through it again in February.
We're not, we're putting it on there now, we're discussing it now, so that we can...
We done discussed it five times already.
But, Mr. Mayor, also note that there, there's a second page to this, and it's for a nozzle, and it'll be about 4,600 dollars, so the total between the two will be about 42,000 dollars. But that, that will save the city untold amount of money that we won't have to go out and hire a contractor, we'll be able to do it ourselves.
Well, my question would be, do we have somebody qualified to do that?
That's unfair.
Because send somebody who's not qualified, specifically your, your statement was to me, or your text to me was, instead of hiring a legal contractor, we'll buy a piece of equipment and send somebody to the south, to Jessamine Street, from the city who can fix the problem. Well, are they qualified to fix the problem, and we just want to send somebody to Jessamine Street who not qualified, just to pacify, saying we accept somebody to Jessamine?
No, ma'am, I would never recommend that we take someone that's unqualified to run a piece of equipment over a hundred thousand dollars and let them complain with it.
Well, they run the back door, every two months they tore up. They ain't qualified to run that, they run it.
Oh, yeah. What we're doing is, we purchased the tractor, once we get it in here, and the, uh, we get back, one thing about it, if you buy equipment from them, they'll tell you you got lifetime training with it. You get new people in, and you need to get them trained, all you got to do is call them. And they said they'd come and spend a few days with us, help us camera, teach us to do whatever we need to do. As far as the nozzle goes, same thing. We get the nozzle, they'll bring somebody in here, and, and train on that new nozzle, and make sure it's efficient with it, and then we can go in there and get it good.
All right, uh, the first, just passing these out for everyone, once you all have a copy of it. Grab your stroller.
About hand.
Mr. Schergert? Uh, again, and again, I apologize if you felt it was, it was a communication back and forth, but on this moment, just, uh...
Ma'am, this is a public meeting for public comment, but law requires it.
All right, so...
So let me ask a question.
That's what law requires.
Just discussing this and never got finished saying what I was gonna say, because they started talking to me. I never finished the comments I was making about this list.
Okay, great.
So, my concerns are, this, we got a, a list three months ago pertaining to the projects for, for that American Rescue money. I requested three months ago, and I've requested five, four or five times also, that Jessamine, Chestnut, and Reed Street be added as a project on this list. Well, on this list, there's no projects in South Darlington, not one.
That's not right.
Every project on this list, Country Club, Treatment Plant, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Casual Ferry Road, Survivor Hydrants, uh, renovation of pump stations, gravity sewer in Ness, Purse, wherever that at, Wyandotte, and wherever these at, all these are in the Country Club. On North Darlington, uh, East Broadway in South Main, which is down near front of Hardest. Now, those citizens in Jessamine, Chestnut, Reed, and I've asked five times that this be added to the list. Now, how come we can't get no projects on this list in our neighborhood, but you can get a list that are all North Darlington?
That's the question.
Why can't we get that?
That's the question.
I asked also that the ditches in South Darlington that hasn't been cleaned out in 25 years be added to the list. Why are they not on this list? I was, we should've did that two months ago, because I done asked five times. Comment was made to me by the city manager yesterday when we had a conversation, that it can't be added to the list unless all the council agree. Well, this list, all the council didn't agree on this list, but they got it. Now, you gonna tell me, black council members can't add nothing to this list, but the white council can add to this list?
Wow.
Now, that's what I was told yesterday.
All right, let's go ahead and get into the, uh...
Now, I don't, I have a problem with this list, because I've asked too many times that we can add Jessamine, Chestnut, and Reed, because their citizens been suffering for 20, 30 years, with their house flooding, water under their house, mold under their house, and the city manager gonna tell me, it's not a priority, oh, it's a priority. Might not be a priority in his neighborhood, but it's a priority in our neighborhood. And this need to be adjusted, and they, this need to be added to this. Don't come telling me no food is about no back truck.
Mr. Mayor.
And you gonna send somebody unqualified to Jessamine Street?
This is Backus.
You gonna send somebody unqualified to Jessamine Street that patch up something in our neighborhood, but you gonna pay a professional contractors to go in your neighborhood?
Right, right.
That's a bunch of bull.
Let me respond.
Mayor, the, the list that you have before you is of projects that we have to use outside contractors with, because we don't have the personnel or the skills to do it.
What's false?
The...
I asked five times not to...
All right, let's be courteous tonight, let's talk like adults.
This piece of equipment that you will discuss in February, we can do it on our own. We won't have people who are trained, we're not gonna put over a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment in somebody's hands that doesn't know.
Well, let's start with the top of the list and continue to add to the list. Mr. Blair gave us the list, Ms. Backus, if you want to continue to add to the list when we get here, we'll add to the list, we'll take things off, we're not here to spend any money tonight. We're here to decide and lock it, to be done.
Oh, y'all heard that, right? So when the next time it come up, let's see if Jessamine, Chestnut, and Reed is on this list. Because they've been saying that for three months, and it still ain't on this list.
All right, let's go.
So that tells you somebody ain't telling the truth.
And the top, gravity sewer for the Country Club. Schergert?
Uh, this is a required repair or rehab that has to be done in compliance with the inspection that was done in March of 2021. Uh, we have, uh, issues at all of our pump stations. This particular pump station overflows into a wetlands and into a storm drain directly into Black Creek. We can eliminate the pump station by installing a gravity sewer for about the same price as renovating the pump station. However, we eliminate the cost of the pump station forever. The cost of the electricity, the cost of the inspections, and everything else that goes along with the pump station.
But this one currently is leaking?
It is patched, yeah, all of our pump stations are patched together at this point. Uh, we don't have any that aren't functioning, but we, we have a lot of issues at every one, and it could, and it has malfunction, and it can malfunction at any time. It doesn't...
Is this one that we refine for if we don't get fixed, or...
That's correct.
How, how, how long do we have before we have to have it fixed?
Uh, we have to have them all, we should have them all fixed for some sort of remedy or plan in place before that March deadline.
March?
March of 2022.
All right, so, if everybody will listen, for just a second, okay? This is what I am trying to get accomplished. I would like to get the whole town fixed, okay? We have 2. something million dollars. As we work to see what needs to be fixed, and that was the purpose of this meeting tonight, is to bring up additional stuff that needs to be fixed that has not been presented to us, okay? Whatever else needs to be fixed, so we can put it on the list. If we're being fined by DHEC to get something done, I would say wherever that is, it needs to be taken care of. As we try to get stuff fixed, okay, the city will work diligently to get grants to go with it. So if you will listen to my numbers for just a second, I'm gonna give you random numbers. These are random numbers, okay? We have approximately 2.4 million dollars. If we fix, my understanding, the ones that need to be fixed, according to DHEC, um, it will take most of the 2.4 million dollars, I don't know exactly, until we get close to rent. So that's what we're trying to find out and discuss tonight, so what, so we can give a clear view. As we're working on stuff, and we get a grant, if we get a grant for a hundred thousand, or, or, Senator Moore gave us $300,000 the other day, if we get a grant, that $300,000, we go back in the bucket, and then we go fix it, we can continue to fix another one, work on getting a grant, continue to fix that. Our goal is to get all of these fixed for years, for years, for whatever reason. We have now approached that lots of this stuff, as you see, this one we're gonna be fined, how much will we be fined if we don't fix it by March?
It's up to $10,000 per day.
So again, um, that's where we're at, we're trying to dissect what we've got, okay? A lot of the stuff, I've been here two years, it's been dumped in our hand, our plate, and also we're gonna be fined $10,000 if we don't fix something. It's not that we don't want to fix $1,000, uh, but we're trying to figure out where we at, okay? So I'm asking everybody to just please listen, and us, us work as adults together to see where we at. We're not spending any money tonight, okay? We're just trying to see where we at. So again, my question is, this one needs to be fixed, $10,000 fine if we don't get it fixed, okay? Per day, okay? Um, and we can fix this one with the gravity fees, okay? And so it'll be about two or seven thousand dollars, right? Is there a potential chance that we get a grant?
There is, and, uh, Ms. Lisa Bailey and I have been working on it recently. However, I've considered and tried to approach four different funding sources so far for grants, and been turned down everywhere. I want to combine this particular project with, well, I'm gonna call 1, 2, 3, number four on the list, the Casual Ferry, I call it a river crossing, it's creek crossing under Black Creek and a pump station installation at, at McCloud to abandon the sewer line that's elevated above Black Creek, that's falling apart.
And these projects would, would be put together as a one...
We're trying to do that now, yes.
To, to, to put what together?
Now...
Which ones? What do you say, put together?
The one that's four, $13,000?
Put together, uh, this, this...
The gravity sewer?
The gravity sewer with this Casual Ferry one right there. We're trying to put those two together in one grant, and I've tried now from four different funding sources. And I was told by, by RIA that we could quit working on one of our projects we got now, and they'd give us a grant for it, or if we finish one before the deadline on the next grant application, we can apply for the grant then. So hopefully, we can get one of those two done. Lisa and I, right now, we're looking at a FEMA grant to take care of this. FEMA, DHEC, H, M, G, B, Pro.
As or litigation?
Right.
What, about what date are you, are projected that one of the other grants will be, projects will be finished?
No, no, we, we got the ones working in South Darlington, $1.8 million right now. If it can be done before the April deadline, we might be about, don't look for that path. It's probably the September before we can, there's rounds in April, and there's ones in September.
All right, so here's, here's my question. Here's my question. Uh, let's say it's September, and let's say we, this was one of the projects, okay? You say, well, we could get done. They're not gonna start this project tomorrow.
No, and, and...
But we have enough time, is there enough time in there to possibly get that done, and to where you got another, you can get that, finish it up, and go get a grant for it, and get this done?
Well, this, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be in this, this, this hopeful side of it. I would hope that DHEC would allow us to do that. If we have completed the application for a RIA grant, and we have all that information for them, right now, we just got some preliminary engineering. If we have some real engineering with plans, print specs, and all of that, and the whole package's complete.
Show them that you have to please, the project's gonna begin.
If, if something happens, DHEC comes running in and says, oh, your, the pump station is failed, and you are violating the laws of South Carolina. We can say, we've got it engineered, we're waiting for the RIA application to open up again, and we're gonna apply it in. They may not find us, I'm not gonna say that they won't. But here's the thing, we've got 200 items like that.
Here's my other question. The Casual Ferry, Casual Ferry pipe, so everybody understands that, if you ride down Casual Ferry, you look up through the woods, there's a pipe out there, runs across the water, okay? Leaks sometimes, that's short, and goes to the hospital up there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is that the only place it goes to?
The only place it goes to.
Are they not, McCloud not ordered, can we not go to them to help get some...
They are gonna give us a piece of land to put the pump station on.
And it's...
That's it.
I want to say that's all, but, I mean, you know...
That's, that's, yeah, that's a lot, but, yeah, that's, that's as far as it's got. We asked them when this happened, we asked them, they, they voted, they met their board of directors, then immediately agreed to give us a space for it, also.
So that, so that the public knows, and I, and I know you, since you have been here, you seem to have worked really hard to get grants, and so our goal is to try to take this money and multiply it for grants, so that we don't go, well, we just got $2 million, and spend it, and write a check for it, and it's all gone, and then in the end, we don't have nothing to do with it. Uh, and we only can fix a few of the, fewer things, we want all the stuff fixed. So if we can get grants, and we're gonna allow them to get it fixed to match this, then, uh, it will multiply. All right, so, again, you're looking at both of these need to be done by March? Need to be started, need to be started by March?
We need to have some plan in place to abate all of these things by March.
We're running second, running second, we're on these two, okay? So these two, so we don't run so fast that people think we're, we're playing slot card, okay?
Yeah.
All right, and these two need to be started by March, and then you got a potential chance that DHEC will not find us, $10,000.
Well, we also, uh, renovate the sewer pump station, that needs, we need to have a plan in place.
But you were putting, that is one, you were putting that as one...
That's one particular project.
Okay, any, before we move to the next one, any, anybody clear on where that was at? All right, what's the next?
Fire hydrant upgrades, those have to be, that has to be done by April. That's another DHEC issue that was identified in an April sanitary survey.
This is all through the whole city, correct?
Yes, sir.
How many fire hydrants do we have here?
300 and something.
It had to be one.
No, we have 300 and something total. The initial level was 60 and something that we were gonna have to replace or repair. We have recently gotten a new standard, I met with Fire Chief Pat yesterday, and we just went through the South Darlington area only, and we identified 22, we feel pretty confident need to be repaired. There may be as many as 24 in South Darlington, too.
Here's, here's my question, here's my question. When did this occur that, and this needs to be done by when?
April.
April. Um, so my question is, I know that they just called us and say, hey, fire hydrants need to be done by April. When, when did somebody know?
Uh, in April of last year.
April, so they just told us April of last year that... They told...
Uh, Mr. Kinsall.
Kinsall, but told Mr. Kinsall last year?
Yes, sir.
Let's see, we weren't told, let's see, and then you can look back at the record, how many times I've asked for a fire hydrant. Um, and so we found out, Kinsall, I guess, found out last year in April, that this has to be done.
And again, they don't have to all be repaired by April, we just have to have a plan and project in place working toward the vacu...
And to do that, to do that is a $600,000... And to do that, to do that is a six or six thousand dollar project?
That's, we've, that will do a major portion of it, we don't really know till we get into it. That's thirty fire hydrants at worst case scenario.
Possible grants for that?
Ain't finding any yet, there's possible, possibility of FEMA, I spoke with, again, those same four funding sources.
So here, here's my thing, so that the public knows also, that I've spoken numbers of times with, with Senator Lloyd. Senator Lloyd says there's much money available, but he doesn't want for us to even talk to him unless you've got a project. So we've got to be able to go to him and say, this is a project, this is a project, can you help us? He may, he may not be able to help us, there may be money available there, I don't understand how all that works either. But I know, working with him, and he's been more than generous to work with us, and, and call, answer my calls back graciously, um, and is more than willing to help Darlington, but again, we need to know what our projects are, and I know we've got more that we can handle, so my goal is to get all the projects out here, if there's, if all of these streets need to be paved, they're all ours, I'll pay, I'll pay seventeen streets for it. Okay, so whatever we got, that's my goal tonight, guys, is to try to get what projects we got, line them up, and how much we gotta get, and let's go get it, okay? Um, so the fire hydrants, everybody understand it, Miss, uh, Miss Ria?
No, I was just gonna say, uh, can you identify each, uh, how many on here are like, uh, a DHEC mandate? You know, you, you gotta do something, you gotta have this. But right now, we're looking at the, uh, is it the first four, or just the one and four, and notify, have, like that?
That's the only one I got.
Oh, are you saying this whole list is the mandate?
No, ma'am, on there that say required, if it says required by DHEC, that's what it is, required by DHEC, required by DHEC.
See, I love saying that, baby.
No, no, some of them are saying required and-
Require, require, require.
Yep, not one here, not one here. This, this, this is required by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, not by DHEC. This one and this one are DHEC. This is required just to make sure that our water is potable.
Okay.
That's a word everybody has another, potable.
The reason for the question is, going along with what the mayor is proposing, that, that if the, the ones that's mandated, mandated, you've gotta do something here right now. Can't we just go present that to the, to, uh, to the senator and let's move on?
DHEC always requires-
But somebody to go someplace else.
So that we don't get fined?
I'm sorry.
Can you, can you identify out of this list, what are DHEC requirements and what are required by other government?
I'm gonna take your list back.
The gravity sewer, number one is required by DHEC. Filter media, water treatment, uh, water treatment plants, is that number two for you all?
It is.
Okay. That one should be required for potability of our drinking water. If nobody's saying we gotta do it, but if we don't do it, our drinking water's not gonna be very high quality.
Which one is that now?
Number two.
Number two.
Number three, wastewater treatment plants, basins, one A and one B, that's a requirement of-
I don't see it like one or two, give me a name again.
This is wastewater treatment plant, basins.
Number three.
Yeah, three A and one D.
One, two, three?
Two hundred fifty-eight thousand?
Three hundred sixty-two.
I mean, three sixty-two.
That's required by DHEC?
No, that's required by the United States Environmental Protection Agency under our NPDEs permit. National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit.
Hallelujah.
Casual ferries, you're gonna DHEC.
Casual ferry, number four is required by DHEC, fire hydrants are required by DHEC. Sewer renovations, the pump stations are required by DHEC. And the last two are not required, but sure we'd like to see.
Okay, but these numbers we've got, for example, we're talking about the fire hydrants, six hundred sixty thousand dollars. Is that an accurate number or an estimated?
Sixty thousand, hi.
The standard, uh, let me, let me explain one thing, we're very high people, we, we, the standard for the fire hydrants has changed. I met with the chief yesterday, we've got, it's a, it's a complicated process. We got, the, the new standard is, you've gotta reach five fire hydrants to reach this, reach this particular fire flow within a thousand feet of a fire. So we gotta make this grid and put it all over on a map, figure out what you're doing, what you're bad. We know that most of the two barrel fire hydrants in the city of Darlington are bad, so we've got a majority of those into this, in this program. Uh, so, and a lot of those don't have bad, so what we did was, we chose the worst case scenario for replacing a fire hydrant, and multiplied that times about half of what we think we need to do here, thinking that the other half are gonna be a lot easier to do, and we got a pretty good fig, figure. Now, I, I didn't come up with this on my own, I didn't just talk to one engineer, I talked to nine different vendors, I talked to four contractors, I talked to eight different funding agencies, I talked to five people in operations and maintenance, and four engineering firms come up with this, all of these figures.
I'm like, what I'm, I can't, I can't go-
I feel pretty good about these shit.
I can't go to Senator Lloyd and ask for money on any project without saying, and say, I think it's about six or six, and he's laughing.
No, I think, I think these are pretty good figures.
But I, I mean, how long would it take if we say, well, we're gonna do this, or to get us closer to it, to come up with a more accurate number, because we know that it's gonna be done, so we need to-
We won't know until we get into the project, I think this is as accurate as we can come up with, with today's data.
To know you have, uh, drawings, drawings have to be put out.
That's correct.
And when the vibes come back, you know what the company's saying.
We've already collected enough information to do a specification for a fire hydrant through the fire department and through some of these vendors, and, and the fire department has decided what they wanted and what they needed, and we eliminated some of the needs that they would just look like fluff. We got down to a pretty basic fire hydrant, but not in the scenario as same.
This is about how many fire hydrants, there are about?
Something under sixty now, we were at sixty-six, sixty-seven, we think we're at fifty-eight now.
But that quota's for thirty.
And that's for thirty, but the worst case scenario, so.
Alright, uh, the waste, the two hundred, the three hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars was the wastewater treatment plants A and B, that was-
That's a pretty solid figure there.
That's the wastewater treatment plant maintenance?
It's a maintenance item for the wastewater treatment plant, it's to, to ensure that the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant still meets the NPDEs permit requirements.
And we'll be digging out the old dirt and replacing it? So it's better than that?
Sort of, it, it's almost another exploratory, but it, this is the, the, the digging out of all the dirt and replacing, all that other infrastructure standing there, all the hardware and plumbing that's standing there. Hopefully we won't have to do that.
So it is?
Yeah, this is the cost of doing it all, doing the whole thing. On that, and this is a per year cost for the next four years. That's, that's not done, that's, this project is not done with just three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, multiply that times four. Once a year for the next four years.
Now, with that one under, that one's under penalty outside, or not, I don't think it's been done, it was in our term?
Not by DHEC. The effluent from the wastewater, if the water flowing out of the wastewater treatment plant into, into Black Creek degrades to a point where we can't meet the NPDEs permit requirements, then it's a real serious violation.
So this pump station, that's in the country club, is that not the pump station that was included in that grant that we got? That's not the same one?
The one back, number one.
Cause we got a grant for the pump stations.
Four, five?
No, it was the four pump stations, where it went in South Darlington?
This is not included in it?
The, no, ma'am, not the South Darlington.
All four stations, was it four?
It was four pump stations, there's four new stations included.
Alright, the old wastewater treatment plant on, uh, Florence Highway, Grove Hill at the cemetery.
So Old Florence Road?
Old, Altel, which is not an Altel anymore, but it's in that intersection of the bypass and Main Street. And Joe Lewis, those are the four.
They're starting on Joe Lewis, but then once they finish Joe Lewis, that's starting the other ones?
They, they are.
And that project, uh, when you say, not just Joe Lewis, Joe Lewis, but Joe Lewis, Verizon, Old Florence Road, and Grove Hill, all of those, should we have a, a September, you think?
Yeah, the, the contract says, um, end of April, end of April? We, we feel like they're probably gonna be thirty days over due to COVID for no other reason.
For all four?
Yes, sir, and all this force, a lot of force may go with that one too.
Alright, so then, but penalty wise, number one, uh, replacement of filter, uh, for not penalized, but we need to give that to two fifty-eight?
Two, two fifty-eight, filter, that is a, if, that, what's happening now is they test the water treatment, the wastewater treatment plant at every stage the, the water goes through. When the water starts to degrade after a certain stage, and they realize that, or we should all realize, that particular part of the process needs to be rehanded or, or needs maintenance. And this is a maintenance item for that particular part of the plant. The water's starting to degrade going through those filters, so we're gonna have to replace the mil, media, because that's the only part of the process that will clear up and, and give us a higher quality water, so we, we've got to do that.
That's important to be done, or not being found for.
That's correct, so if we continue to meet the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit issued to us by the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Where does that facility provide water? What, what parts of town?
All of town.
Okay, north, southeast, and west?
Everywhere.
Alright, uh, renovate sewer pump stations?
Renovate sewer pump stations, we, this is also from that same compliance inspection that was done in March of twenty twenty-one.
And done by DHEC.
Yeah, completed by DHEC, that's correct. It's actually a federal inspection conducted by the, the state.
We have to do that.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Alright.
We, we have to do it. Um, we're, we, we have fourteen pump stations, we're eliminating two. We've got a grant to renovate four, that's six, so, and we have, um, what else were we doing with the other one? We gotta do something with the other one, I can't think of what it is right now. This eliminates all the rest of the pump stations.
And that was, you were trying to make all the pump stations the same, correct?
That does that also, so that we eliminate, every, every pump station we have is a different sized pump, different type of control, and a different type of electronics in it. This puts them all together as one, so we only have to keep a few spare parts, rather than having to keep whole piles of spare parts. Every individual pump station has to have spare parts for everything now, and we're gonna eliminate that, we don't have to do that.
So then the gravity sewer on, uh, Ness, Chris, and Klein Dot, and Perforce, Perforce free or four?
Now, that's, that's, uh, it's not a requirement, and it's, and it's not mandated by anything, that's just a, a, a case for us to grow our system and, and, uh, collect more revenue. Uh, and my preliminary estimates on that, and I've looked into it really good, and I counted it out, and I've done a lot of work toward that. It looks like about fifty-two thousand to fifty-four thousand dollars a year, at a hundred percent build out. I know if everybody in the world over there connected to it, it would bring us fifty something thousand dollars a year. I wanna look at that through, and I spoke to John about this, and I hate to open up this candle where I'm here, but the USDA, uh, Rule Development Loan and, uh, Grant, where they loan us sixty percent of the money and, and grant us forty percent, they, they, uh, the term of the loan's over forty years, so that fifty grand a year is paying for, maybe.
Right, this second, that one's working.
But we're, we're looking at that, sir.
Right, this second, that one's working.
Yeah, but there's nothing to make, there's nothing there. This is a chance for us to grow the system and make more money.
Who live out there have seventy tanks.
That's right.
Alright, the, the East Broad and South Broad, which is in front of Hardee's and?
Oh, that's, that's one of those Maypop situations, bad tire. Uh, last year y'all replaced, or the city of Darlington, excuse me, replaced a seven hundred and fifty feet of eighteen inch sewer line over on East Broad Street at a cost of six hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's about eight hundred and thirteen dollars a foot. And from what I understand, y'all had a big open hole with open sewer for quite a while, and a lot of people inconvenienced over there because the sewer line collapsed. Well, during that construction, they did some inspection of the sewer lines over in that area, and they discovered that the rest of East Broad Street and part of Main Street were in the same condition as that was on replacing, the part that y'all replaced on East Broad Street.
Alright.
So, there's-
And you said Main Street? You said Broad Street and Main Street?
Broad Street and South Main, yes. And there's four thousand-
How far down South?
Uh, it's four thousand three hundred foot total, it's, uh-
Cause I know that if I, I know that when I was in a, I saw a sewer just past me.
There's two thousand, two hundred feet of ten inch and two thousand one hundred of eighteen inch, and some of that ten inch is on South Main, but most of it's stayed ten inch. So, Mayor, somewhere above twenty-one hundred feet. Okay?
So you're saying you want to take this?
This, I'm sorry.
You wanna go all the way from Hardee's, down Broad Street, and tie it all the way down Broad Street where the system collapsed last year, and make it a solid?
They're in, they're in South Main Street too, yes, ma'am. What, what, if we do this project with a line, it comes out at about a little over four hundred dollars a foot, for the total project. Uh, the one that City of Darlington completed last year cost eight hundred dollars a foot. So if we do this prior to its collapse, we save half the money.
And what's your estimate is the one million eight hundred thousand dollars if we land?
That's correct, and that's a really good figure, without a doubt, that's, that's a, that's pretty solid there.
So have we cameraed that?
We have, we not only, yeah, they've cameraed it, they've inspected, they've actually gone in and cut cores out of, out of the pipe, see, and, and put plugs back there to see how much pipe was left, they've done a lot of work there, a lot of investigative work there. Or you all did, you all did. Now, I don't have those inspections in my hand, but I can give them.
Alright, sir, just as a recap.
Yes, sir.
Paved with all the main numbers on it that says, uh, water and sewer projects. The two hundred seven thousand dollars is, will be fined if we don't get that done, gravity sewer, correct?
Yes.
Number one.
Yeah.
Uh, number four, five, and six. Number one, four, five, and six will be fined.
Yeah, those are DHECs, all those, one, four, five, and six are all DHECs.
Okay. That's just that.
And they've already been identified, and already been reported, and already been inspected, and we're already in, uh, in a, a phase that they allow us to make plans and and tell them how we're gonna revert, innovate this.
Counsel understands, citizens understand. If everybody denied, or next week, or else said, let's start with these four, okay? And you got four projects, can you get grants on four projects at one time?
If we bundle them together, there's a possibility, but there are limits to the size of the grants we get, depends on how we get them.
So somebody would be as good as to bundle them together, is y'all go?
Well, if we can find enough low, medium income people, we can prob, possibly get some CDBG money for parts of these, but not for probably not all of them, because some of them are in commercial areas. We, uh, we also only get five hundred thousand dollars a week from RIA, of course, RIA is about to get huge amounts of money, from what I understand, and maybe they're gonna open that up, I sure hope so. Uh, there's the FEMA grants that we're just now exploring, I can't tell you enough about, I mean, I, it's, it's very complicated. There's also the USDA Rule Development, that we can bundle all of this stuff into, but that's, remember, that comes with a loan, we gotta pay back a lot, part of the loan.
Looking at all this, please. Do you have a question? Alright, so, um-
Those are some possible.
So that's, that's, that's your, that's your list right there, pretty much, right?
Sir?
That's, that's your list, right?
That's my list.
Okay.
Thank you.
And let me ask you a question, you said the three sixty-two eighth for wastewater treatment plants, that's a per year figure for four years, so it's actually one million four hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred dollars to complete that project?
Over four years, yes, sir, it is. And at the end of that, that should give you, from what I, I give the city of Darlington, from what I understand, from, from, from the time that sewage treatment plant has been built until today, there's not been any of this type of maintenance. So this should give us several amount of time over that maintenance is needed again.
And Mr. Bill, if, if you decide not to use ARP money for it, you can always budget money for it.
Yeah, oh, that item does, is budgeted, but we, we have, but it's not funded completely, so.
So if that money's budgeted, why don't we ask the board to do it?
Yeah, well, we, because it's not funded completely.
I mean, how much should we budget for every project that's drinking water?
Uh, that's, uh, that's sewer, not drinking water.
How much is the budget for it?
Um, I'm gonna say three hundred thousand dollars, but we really need to only do about two hundred thousand dollars. I'll cover their other expenses in the sewer this year.
So you budgeted enough to do? One more than half, but.
Yeah, well, yeah. And this was based on figures that y'all had from a year and a half ago, we know, three years ago.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, Mrs. Backus, you were asking for which streets, Chestnut Street?
This is needed through Jessamine, Chestnut, and Reed. Cause the water run, flow from Jessamine down Broad, Broad, no, Co, um, Dogg and Street to Jess, to Chestnut, through Miss Bird's backyard to Reed Street. And there's a collapse in the middle between Reed Street and Chestnut Street. The whole line is collapsed. I talked to DOT about it. They're saying they didn't put it there, it belongs to the city of Dog. Of course, city of Dog tried to pass the buck to the DOT. DOT came out, cleaned it out as far as from the street to Reed, to that middle. Once they get to the middle, there's no way for this water to go, because that whole line has collapsed.
This is. Clear, I've talked to, I've talked to, uh, DOT also and they said the same thing. They pulled up, Kevin pulled up papers and showed something from a hundred years ago, whatever it was. But they, they put it, they're right, they put it out there, but now who's, who's responsible, I don't know. Uh, but, but this is not a storm, this is a storm drain, this is, uh, this is not sewer, this is storm drain water. This is important, it's been, correct?
This is.
Not sewer.
Not sewer. But the money can be used for this.
I understand.
And we got, from what I understand, you got two things on this item, that's a wish list, seemed to me. So this needs to be on the list.
Is everybody fine with it? We, we want it on.
Now, this is the eighth time or sixth or seventh time we didn't ask for this. So, and I want all y'all to know this, so next month, if it's not on the list, you know what happened.
Are we talking about stormwater for those three streets, Jessamine?
Jessamine, Chestnut, and Reed.
All right.
As well as.
Yes, and also around, was that well circle? Uh, in front of the school?
That ties in, that ties in to Jessamine.
Okay, but in that circle right there behind Mr. Smith now, about there, we're supposed to get back there, that's a collapse, being sure whatever.
Jessamine, Chestnut, and Reed is all that's tied together. Also, I requested for infrastructure, which is, uh, those ditches need to be cleaned up. We've got ditches in South Dog, that had to be cleaned out in thirty years.
There was a street now.
Jordan Street, Spark Street, Henry Street.
They should be.
And I, Millen Street, and I gave all this to the city manager.
They should be covered up.
About these streets, about these ditches.
Mr. Blair.
That haven't been cleaned out. That's also a project that needs to be added to this list.
George Street, Village Streets, everyone's.
Spark Street, Henry Street.
Yellow Blue.
But it's Jordan, that's been Sparks and Jordan, it's rabbit, by the, by the schoolhouse. Gander Street, yeah, that Gander Street. All those have ditches that the city put in and have never cleaned.
DOT to try to get, um.
And Candy.
The bypass out there.
Oh, no, Henry.
They keep.
I said Henry.
He said Henry, oh, okay.
I suppose it started this month, also on that, so we'll see if we can get all that done from them. Who's responsible for, for us or them one? So those are ditches.
And I truly want to, when I get this call each week for, for, uh, Millen, it's not as bad as the rest of her, but I get the call every week. It's the ditch on Millen.
Now, my question is. My question is, cause I wanna make sure this is well understood. When will this estimate, when will we get an estimate for these two projects? When will we receive this, city manager?
Which two projects?
The one, the two I just said.
The streets and the ditches.
Both of them.
I know, I mean, he was just, I'm just, I'm just telling.
I want an estimate on both of them, when is this gonna happen, city manager? How long is this gonna take?
We'll have to contact our engineers and they will have to work up the estimates. All these estimates were done outside of house, except with the help of Mr. Sugar.
So I'm expecting this to take place within the next sixty days. I don't want to be three, four months, five months down the road and saying, oh, they didn't get to it yet.
I'll get you estimates. All right, so we got those little lists. Uh, Mrs. Reed, you got anything?
Um, yeah. But mine is mostly, mostly stormwater. I said they only had this at one East Broad and South Main. I'd like to see where, uh, this is off of Pearl. Where we, and, and I don't know how to, so we've had so many holes collapses from Pearl all the way up, including, uh, including, uh, uh, Well Street and up to, I think it's Siskron. I would like to see how that can be dealt with.
Well Street, if we're done.
Well, no, well, when I say Well Street, I'm using, because there's so, there's still, um, as a result of whatever is old Well Street, there's, uh, uh, collapses further over. There's collapses further over. So I'm looking at the big hole that's still behind St. James Church. I'm looking at the situation on Siskron. And, and see on Pearl Street, on Pearl Street, where, uh, right beside the, uh, Taki's not so bad as my other, um, business is there. It is just so flooded, I know that they have the, but we've had so many, we have so many, um, the, the holes, they, the collapses right in there. It, it just need to be a major, major problem.
Now, clarify, can you keep saying?
You, you understand what I'm.
We're at, we're at Sisk, uh.
See, I really want you to come from, from Safeway, from Syracuse, that we could come all the way down Pearl Street, taking all of that, there's something wrong up in there, because there's steady, it's this.
All that drain, all that drainage needs to be fixed.
It's so, I'm looking at, I know, I'm trying all my best, uh, analytics, because it is a problem all the way down. I mean, every so often.
By, by Hardee's, I mean by Taki's and the.
All of it.
The mini store right there floods right there, right there all the time.
Awful. And the streets are so.
We turn them up together in front of, uh, George's Car Care Center right there. From their back usually is a flooding area.
So, and, and one thing I was gonna ask since we're here, all right, um, so things like, uh, fixing your streets and I see that. My, my, my request isn't about so much the street as, oh gosh, I don't even, like, uh, what I would like to see coming out of, of my, well, there's not so much my, my what I'm just saying on the west side, the west side, from the bypass, Washington Street to say the, the, uh, fullway stop. There is, uh, Miss Harkless, there is a collapse that we have not dealt with, it's been there. And that system we keep, when the engineers came and dealt with the project that we had there, they identified, they said that there's three different systems that are connected there that runs and first of all, something we did when, when the, the cotton mill or when it was Hartswell Oil Mill, uh, when the DHEC was on there, we could not get rid of the waste and we did, we did some, we, we did something uh, to accommodate that and put in a system that runs, that takes the waste, because our waste system couldn't handle it. These are the things I've been told, I don't know all of it. All I know is that, that same collapsed hole is there in Miss Harkless yard. And we've already had two people to fall in the hole. You know, just fortunately they had.
Per second, okay?
So you understand, okay, these are.
All right, Miss, Miss Reed?
Yes, sir.
The hole in Mrs. Harkless needs to be fixed. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll put that down, we'll work on getting it from DOT. DOT keeps hearing us this right here, all right, Miss Reed? Um, so we can try to figure out how to, how to bore this, so they know how to, how to get it. Uh, the drainage from, what road is that on, I turn left by George's Car Care?
Which one?
I turn left at George's Car Care to go toward.
To Washington Street, wouldn't that align?
Wait a minute, I'm not.
That's Washington Street.
Oh, yeah, Washington, yeah.
Washington Street.
She lives on Washington.
And Pearl.
And Pearl.
Back to, um, we're just saying back to Well Street, now look at that area. And that's drainage.
I want to say back to Siskron.
Okay, and then, uh, the collapse, the collapse behind, uh.
St. James Church.
St. James Church.
Yes, it's still there, big, big one.
Was the, the rescue squad area, was that hole, that hole was finally fixed, are correct?
Yeah, that's been fixed.
And I don't know what's that.
Sycamore Street.
What?
That was on Sycamore Street.
That's fixed.
Okay, that, that one was fixed.
Yeah, okay.
All right, anything else, Mrs. Reed?
No, that's it right, right now.
Mrs. Backus?
Um, we also need to, and I don't know if we said we would or we didn't add it to the list, but this list that this young man just gave us, this need to be added to that list as well, so we can take a look at what we're gonna do, we've added that to the list.
We're gonna, we're gonna look at all those and see what? And when you say these streets, you're talking about paving these streets or?
A lot of them need, uh, sewage work, uh, paving, especially around that Farm Street area, Chestnut Street and all that.
And you're talking paving, what else?
And sewage work. Yeah.
Sewage or stormwater, sewage?
No, it's sewage, not on Farm Street, every time it rains, sewage bubbles out the ground on Farm Street. Yeah. Every single time it rains.
Okay. All right, Mr. Uh. Gordon, you have any to add?
No, uh, um, I think our list is full.
Mr. Millian?
I just.
Here was Gordon, Gordon.
No, just hope Ms. Lisa can help us out with some grants to be able to leverage these funds. Um, so.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Millian?
Mayor, there are needs everywhere, plenty of streets in my neighborhood need to address them, but they're passable, so we, we'll deal with things that are more severe.
Thank you. Okay, Mr.?
I agree with Mr. Millian, I mean, we, people think that we have a lot of things in our area that get taken care of, but they don't because of DOT and we don't own any of the streets, so there's a lot of issue, but we have more pending things in other neighborhoods, so that should come first.
All right, um, Mr. Secret?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement. Mrs. Backus has been complaining, cause she's asked five, six, or eight, or ten times to have a certain street paved or fixed or whatever. I've been in the city for forty years, I still don't have sewage. And I understand, we don't have the money to do it yet. And yes, I do live out in the country club area. But I annexed into the city on my own, so I could get city water and city sewer forty years ago. I got the water, I don't have the sewage. I have replaced my field lines and I sent them tight three times over the last forty years. I feel your pain, I understand what you folks are going up with. I have been real patient and my neighbors have been real patient too. So we understand, we don't have the money yet to get sewage in our neighborhood. But hopefully, on the tail end of what's going on now, maybe we can, we can, we can come to some sort of uh, means to be able to acquire that facility in our neighborhood.
And, um.
Forty years, forty years.
And so that, again, so that everyone knows, um, I mean, some of us has inherited a mess from years of neglect, from just whatever reason, things have fallen apart and, uh, time. The clock has ticked and now it's time. Um, but there's a lot that needs to be fixed. And we're gonna prioritize and start getting what grants we can get and what diligence we can get the grants. Um, the Hardee's Broad Street area, or is the drainage in that area? So we'll continue to try to work this, see if we can go down the river track for that also. Um, so again, we'll give you the total list of all these, so that all these can be on there for February, uh, that we can discuss this again in February, then we can also discuss, um, to me, the, you know, the cameras we got and not having the traffic police, we continue to ask for, uh, we never really, never seem to have money. So even with the camera, I would suggest to where we can, just like down, sound like Taki's over there, Mrs. Reed, uh, what's the problem down there? I don't know. We can't see it, you know, underground, so it may just be a dead cat down there that's that big, it's swollen up in his pocket. Maybe a metal, a metal fix. Uh, so a lot of this stuff could be possibly fixed in sections or done better, if you can see what we're working with.
Yes, let's do it.
Uh, so I think we'll work to get that hopefully in, in February, so that they can start working on those and see if we can get all this other stuff done. Um, and again, I ask the, the citizens to understand that we're diligently trying to figure out what to do with everything. Uh, and this will all be back on the list in January, I mean, February. Um, and, um, we'll start trying to see what we can get taken care of, uh, and safety for everyone.
Hallelujah.
Do we have a proposed funding source for the forty-two thousand for the company that we're looking about? You could use the AR two money for that.
Another question too, is do we need, does he need to bring us back two more bids?
It's why it's three bids.
That's the, that's the only company that sells that particular brand in this area. I mean, if I get a bid, it's gonna, it's gonna be the same, and that's, it's a I-Box system, is what we have. And they're I-Box.
We're gonna get two more bids. It, can you find, are there two more vendors out there?
I can check and see.
There should be.
There'd probably be Atlanta or somewhere like that.
Man.
Okay, we, we. I would ask, I would ask.
We will attempt.
If you can, you know, try to get two.
We're attempting to get two on this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be glad to answer your questions afterwards, I would.
Just keep in mind that Jetback is the company that.
That makes it.
Got our equipment from.
Right, so I was gonna say, that was my question, is can you, can you get a part from somebody else?
Maybe they're not I-Box, either we can.
But just check, see what you can find out, of course, if you can, if you can't get a bid somewhere, we're not. A bit more inside. Okay. All right, uh.
What's there?
Question, Mr. Mayor, there was a statement.
Okay, any further questions from the council?
Can I make the closing statement? Mr. Mayor and the public, when, when I interviewed for this job, I, I've did a lot of this research. And I knew that, that I was stepping into a, a situation where there are a lot of infrastructure needs. Um, it was stated earlier this evening. Bills, fees had not gone up in decades, which is great when you don't have to pay more. I don't like paying more for anything myself. Uh, and last year, I know it was in the middle of a pandemic, the timing was bad. Um, but you'd have to go up forty percent. Your audit's gonna show that it, it's greatly curtailed your losses, your, your million dollar losses. The money that we have is a drop in the bucket for everything we need, for everything we need's well over ten million dollars. Um, all I'm asking is for a consensus that the money that we're gonna be allocated will go towards infrastructure and will go towards, uh, the premium pay, which we're already doing. This is not gonna solve all of our needs. This is a beginning, this is not an end. It's just gonna take multiple years to do this.
Again, we didn't, we didn't discuss, um, the stormwater project, which was East Broad and South Main, that was the one point six, that's the one in front of Hardee's, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Um, almost twelve thousand cars a day go through that intersection. Um, I'm working with individuals in Columbia to try to help get us some funding for that. Hopefully, that, uh, one point six million dollars will come down. But I'm, I'm diligently working with people in Columbia to pull that.
And our objectives there, it will multiply dramatically if we have to go down Broad Street and tear the road up. If we're able to get the railroad to work with us, specifically to work with us to get easement over to, to the railroad, that's what we're trying to do, is go over to the railroad bid that's not being used. Uh, the railroad so far has been really, um, gracious to work with us on numbers of things, and they're working on this now to see if they can get it to where, uh, we can obtain that to where we can be a lot cheaper to go that way to get rid of that drainage problem coming through the middle of town, which blocks the whole city pretty much from going here. Um, so that's the one point six million dollars there, that we're looking at it also. Uh, the parks, uh, the things we're hoping that we could possibly do, again, to me, and again, council decides what you wanna do, but, you know, I want to see the parks grow and all of them nice. And, um, I'd like to see something happen to the one over here off of, uh, behind City Hall also. But, um, you know, at this moment, we got a lot of, but, infrastructure problems need to be taken. infrastructure problems that need to be taken care of. Uh, so again, if council can, uh, weigh in on all this and, um, for February, we'll, meeting, we'll discuss it further. Alright, and so my proposal is that we add the streets to it, I'll give you the sheet that I, that everybody asked also with, um, and then afterwards, I'll, I'll be around if y'all, y'all wanna ask questions. I'm not trying to be rude and not answer your questions, I'm just trying to not start a conversation with everybody throughout.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, because that, if you would at least, uh, would give my little comment time to all these, to these two residents who seem to be anxiously wanting to say something while we're in session, if you would allow that, that, just give them that, I mean, because they seem like.
Come in, sir.
Thank you, mayor. This is a federal act that's rolling down federal dollars. And the whole purpose of it is to lessen the burden that was imposed by the pandemic. This federal act also requires that a public meeting be held where municipalities can receive public comments. But this is almost turning into like a dictatorship, where you say, everything's being presented to council. Apparently, you guys have already stolen this and discussed it, nothing is being presented to the public, and we haven't had an opportunity to make comments. In fact, our ability to make comments, which is a federal law requirement, has been suppressed. I would ask that we not do this, and we allow the public to express their concerns. One of my concerns is, these dollars cannot be allocated as matching funds. These dollars are not to be allocated for regular maintenance. What was presented, and this is the first time we've seen it, as the presenter has said, are in your operation and maintenance budget. These funds are to lessen the financial burden imposed on the citizens of Darwin during this pandemic. During this pandemic, this mayor and council, most of the council voted to increase the financial hardship. So I would recommend that we get a legal reading, because in my assessment, I think funds can be taken from the American Rescue Act, allocated back into the water and sewer budget, to lessen the costs there, to lessen the burden that was imposed during the pandemic on all of the citizens of Darlington. Please respect us, and please honor our rights to provide input and comments into how our government is run, please, we deserve nothing less.
Five hundred seventy thousand individuals are subscribing to an individual on Facebook, guy named Nick Johnson. And if you look at this, is, uh, is YouTube, I'm sorry, YouTube page, you'll find the ten worst places in South Carolina to live. Guess which one is ranked number one?
Darling.
Now, here, here, here's the thing about. Well, I would like to disagree with that, she can amen it, but I would like to disagree, because I love living in Darling. Yeah, I mean, I, I've lived in Darlington, with the exception of being in the Marine Corps and being away for forty, forty, forty years. And my thing is this, uh, Darlington either stands together or it falls apart. And the thing about it is, when we have a city that decides that you're gonna have the south side versus the north side, or the east side versus the west side, or I want this much money and I want this much money, it's not. We didn't say that tonight, sir. I'm, I'm sorry? We didn't say that tonight, sir. Oh, no, no, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't say that tonight, but, but what I'm saying is, I, like I said, I've lived in Darlington for forty years, I've seen the politics, I've seen what's, what's going on. We're, we're, we're in today, so that's what we're trying to correct now. I'm sorry? We're in today, so that's what we're trying to correct now, we're trying to correct that there's. Right. Different sides of the city. But here's, here's, here's the thing, what I'm, what I'm gonna say is, unless you change minds, you can't change hearts. And unless you change hearts, you can't progress together, and that's what I'm saying. When you got folks that have animosity and bitterness against someone else, just because they don't look like you, you're gonna run into a problem, I don't care if you live on the south side of town or the north side of town, at some point, at some point, Darlington's gonna have to stand together and solve our problems, or else we won't even make it into the next, you know, the next census with a quarter of the people that we have. And I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that to everyone in the room, either we're gonna join together, do what we need to do, put aside, you know, for me, I don't care, I don't, I don't give a rip who gets the credit, as long as y'all get stuff, and that's where I'm saying.
Thank you. Hey, all right.
Do I have a motion to adjourn until, until we're ready?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
You have a motion, I'll second it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, very good, thank you.